We're about to call the public hearing to order. The time is 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, and this is a public hearing scheduled prior to a regular meeting of council of the municipality of the County of Kings. At this point, the meeting is called to order. We'll just take a brief round of attendance for those who may be new to our proceedings. If you're not present at a public hearing, you're unable to vote on the issue at hand when it does make its way to council. Council in this format is not council per se, but we're more of a judicial body, quasi-judicial body, that's here to listen and ask questions, but not debate. That part comes later when we get to the municipal council meeting, which is scheduled to begin right once we close the public hearing. So at this point, I just ask you to indicate on your electronic voting pad if you are present or not. And Mayor Matar, who is joining us from above, I love saying that, who's joining us from online, will project from the ceiling that he is present. Are you here with us, Mayor?
I'm present, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. We do not have Councilor Meisner in attendance tonight, and we don't need to excuse her meeting, her, we don't need to excuse her, rather, at this point, but we can excuse her at municipal council. And she would be unable to vote if she was to show up after the hearing. At this point, item two is the application for a text amendment to revise the minimum area and minimum lot frontage requirements of the country residential A4 zone to enable the subdivision of two properties in order to convert the existing duplexes into semi-detached dwellings. Planner for the municipality, Alice Jacob, is here, and at this point, I will turn it over to you for your presentation, Alice.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is an application for a land use bylaw text amendment to change the zone requirements for semi-detached dwellings within the country residential A4 zone. The properties that prompted this amendment are located along Oak Island Road in Evanport. They are, the properties are located within the country residential A4 zone within a rural The proposed text amendment is to change the minimum lot frontage requirements and the lot area requirements for semi-detached dwellings within the zone, within the country residential zone. This would enable the applicant and others to subdivide their properties serviced by central sewer at a reduced lot area and frontage requirements. To provide a background of the country residential zone, a country residential zone was created to maintain low-density neighborhoods in predominantly agricultural areas. The zone permits residential uses such as one-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, mobile homes, and semi-detached dwellings, and also a few other non-residential uses. Currently, the minimum lot area requirement for all residential uses with, for lots with central sewer is 10,000 square feet, and the minimum lot frontage requirement is 80 feet. The applicant, as I said earlier, has two properties in Evanport within the country residential A4 zone. One property, the property to the right measures 11,585 square feet and has a frontage of 105 feet, and the other property has 13,607 square feet and a frontage of 116 feet. Each property has a two-unit dwelling on it. The applicant intends to subdivide these properties and convert the two-unit dwellings into semi-detached dwellings. In doing so, this would result in reduced lot areas, as we can see here, than what is required within the zone, and also reduce lot frontages than what is required within the zone, which is not, which cannot be permitted without this amendment. So the zones that permit semi-detached dwellings within our land use bylaw, all of these zones usually have a separate set of requirements for semi-detached dwellings. That is, properties serviced by central sewer within these zones, the lot area and frontage requirements for semi-detached dwellings are half of what is required for one- and two-unit dwellings. And the case of properties with a septic system onsite, the lot area requirement is same for all residential uses, but the lot frontage requirements is half of what is required for one- and two-unit dwellings. This was also the case with our former country, country residential R6 zone within our previous bylaw 75. We had a separate set of area requirement and a lot frontage requirement for semi-detached This is our current requirement, zone requirement for our country residential zone. As we can see here, the minimum lot area and the minimum lot frontage requirements are same for all residential uses, which includes one units, two units, and also semi-detached dwellings, which means each unit of a semi-detached dwelling will need to have 10,000 square feet in case of a lot serviced by central sewer, and 30,000 square feet in case of lots, lots with septic system on, on it. The separate set of requirements that I mentioned earlier is missing here due to an oversight by staff while drafting the regulations, and this amendment has been part of the planning department's housekeeping list, but having received an application specifically asking for this amendment, the process had to be expedited. Policy 5.3.2 is what enables this application. The policy states amend the text of the land use bylaw provided the proposal meets the general criteria for amending the land use bylaw set out in section 5.3, Development Agreements and Amending the Land Use Bylaw, and section 5.3. Within the section, policy 5.3.7 has a list of general criteria which are applicable to all land use bylaw text, map, and development agreement applications. So these are the three criteria within the policy that is applicable to this particular amendment. The rest of the criteria listed within this policy are site-specific and applies to only specific development agreement or land use map amendment applications. So with regard to these criteria, the proposal was found to be in keeping with the intent of the MPS. I will explain this in detail in the coming slides. And the proposal is not in conflict with any municipal bylaws or regulations. There is no financial impact on the municipality because of this amendment. So with regard to the intent, policy 3.4.2 states lands located in the zone are intended to maintain onsite service low-density neighborhoods consisting primarily of one or two-unit dwellings while all, while encouraging the efficient use of land and infrastructure in an agricultural setting. The zone has also been applied to isolated areas of service development in rural areas of the municipality. In the event of conflict between an agricultural use and a non-agricultural use, the agricultural use shall take priority. And policy 3.4.3 also relates to country residential zone. It also states similar intentions as the zone intent we saw in the earlier slide. Policy 3.4.31 also relates to the country residential zone, where it lists the uses that council, council permits within the country residential zone. And policy 3.4.32 states regulate the pattern of development and limit potential conflicts with agricultural uses by controlling the frontage, lot size, and lot setbacks to encourage efficient development while also maintaining a rural character. So as we can see from all these policies, the intent of the zone is to maintain low-density neighborhoods and to also maintain the rural character of the area. These zones are located outside growth centers, and it consists of both onsite serviced and existing municipally serviced low-density neighborhood. So to check if the amendment is consistent with the intent of the zone, we need to look at two cases here, lots with central, lots serviced by central sewer and lots that has onsite sewer. So we have four zones within our rural areas that permit, four zones other than the country residential zones, country residential zone that permits semi-detached dwellings. The two zones that we see here, tidal shoreline zone and the tidal commercial zone, and there is also the rural mixed dew zone and the resource N1 zone. So if we look at the requirements shown here, the minimum area requirement for one- and two-unit dwellings over here for lots with onsite sewer is greater than the area requirement for sewer service lots. This is because to, this is because to install a septic system, you need to have a larger lot area to contain the septic system within the lot. And again, in this case... Sorry. In the case of lots with onsite sewer or lots that have a septic system, the area requirement that we can see here is the same for one-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, and semi-detached dwellings, which means each unit of a semi-detached dwelling will need to have 30,000 square feet. This is because, in case of a semi-detached dwelling, each unit may be located on two different lots, and the units cannot share a single septic system. Each unit will need to have a separate system of its own, and this will require a 30,000 square feet lot area for each unit. But this does not apply to lots with, that are serviced by central sewer, because you don't really need to install a septic system on those lots. And as a result, the area requirement for semi-detached dwellings is half of what is required for one- and two-unit dwellings. With regard to frontage, as I mentioned earlier, all the zones that permit a semi-detached dwellings, semi, permit a semi-detached dwelling, the frontage requirement for semi-detached dwellings is usually half of what is required for one- and two-unit dwellings, as we can see here. This is a proposed amendment to the country residential zone. As you can see here, we will be adding a new column with a separate set of requirements for semi-detached dwelling, and these are the only changes we are going to be making. And with regard to the intent of the zone to maintain a low-density neighborhood and to also maintain the rural character, in this case, the lots with, lots with onsite sewer, we are not really going to change the area requirement for semi-detached dwelling. The area requirement is going to be the same as before, which means there is not, there isn't any change to the density in this regard. And with the case of lots that are serviced by central sewer, we are reducing, we are proposing to reduce the area to 5,000 square feet per unit. Again, we believe that this wouldn't drastically affect the density of the zone or the intent because, as we can see in this map, all these orange areas marked in orange and the areas marked in purple or pink, I'm not sure, these are the A4 zones, the country residential zones within our county, and the areas marked in purple are the ones that are serviced by central sewer. So the reduced area requirement for semi-detached dwellings would apply to, specifically to these purple areas, and that would, again, that would only apply to lots that are developed with semi-detached dwellings and not to all lots within these purple areas. So we believe that the amendment would be consistent with the intent of the zone to maintain low-density neighborhoods, and also it would be consistent with the intent of the MPS. In terms of our process, a public information meeting was held on October 19, 2023 at Horton Community Center. Seven members of the public were present, including the applicant. Staff received general questions of clarification regarding the properties that prompted this application, prompted this amendment, and there were also, public also inquired about the extent to which this amendment would apply, whether it would apply to the entire zone or whether just to these two properties. And there were also a few general comments regarding the public notification process and also challenges about navigating the municipal website for information. An AAC was not required for this application. The application was presented to the PAC in December. It went to first reading in January, and we are currently at the public hearing. Properties within 500 feet were notified for this hearing, and it was also advertised in the local newspaper. That concludes my presentation. I pass it back to the chair.
Thank you very much, Alice. Are there any questions from council of the proposal ahead of us tonight? Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this proposal? If there are, I'd just ask, do you come forward and address the microphone? State your name and address for the record. Would the applicant like to speak if they're here? No pressure, you're welcome to.
I'm here.
Okay, true. Well, there's no questions, so at this point, I think we're safe to move on if there's no comments from the public at this time. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Alice, for your presentation this evening. Next, we have Laura Mosher, the manager of planning, here to give us the presentation for our next item, item three, Options for Incentive Zoning, Inclusionary Zoning, and Density Bonusing, which are item five of the agenda package and are a really interesting read. So welcome, Laura, to this public hearing, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are here to discuss some development incentives. This comes out of a motion out of council related to the provision of affordable housing. So this, this has changed a little bit over the course of the project, but I think we've got some good amendments here to discuss, so. Why can't I see this?
And you're a little quiet tonight, if you don't mind speaking right into the microphone for me.
Will do, will do. Sorry, I'm having some problems with my slideshow, just let me...
Mayor Matar and anyone else listening or watching online, we are having a bit of technical difficulties while we load Laura's presentation. I think we're, we're good. Oh, I have to turn your mic back on? Okay, there you go.
Thank you, we're back. So as this did come out of, out of discussions around affordable housing, I thought I'd go over a little bit of affordable housing, just to bring everyone up to speed on, on where we're at in our housing market in the country and more specifically in our region and where we're hoping to get to. So affordable housing, this is a lot of words on the screen, I'm going to try and sum it up pretty quickly. One of the tricky aspects of affordable housing is that if you ask five people what affordable housing is, you will get five different answers. There's no one standard answer in the planning world or the housing world, or even the development world for that matter. So we've, we've got a bit of a mishmash here. So housing is first considered affordable if it costs less than, than 30% of a household's before-tax income. So that's linked to the individual. That's one definition of housing that is linked to the individual. But it also needs to be suitable, adequate, and affordable, so it needs to meet the needs of the residents. So if you have a family of six, a one-bedroom apartment is not suitable. It needs to be adequate in the sense that it doesn't require major repairs and that the building complies with minimum occupancy standards, and again, it needs to be affordable, so 30% less than a family's gross income, or before-tax income, sorry, Scott. Other jurisdictions might use different definitions, so some link it more to the housing market as opposed to an individual's income. So a lot of regions will use an 80% average market rent, so if the average market rent in the entire region is $1,000 a month, the residential unit being rented at $800 is considered affordable. By reference, 80% of our market rent in Kings County is $620 a month, which I think we can all agree is probably pretty close to affordable, but also pretty rare these days. This number can often appear somewhat, somewhat artificially low because it does include the entire rental stock for an area, so it's not just those units that are coming up for rent at 1,200, 1,500, and, and more per month. It includes those units that someone may have been renting for 30 or 40 years and has not seen very many rent increases. So it, it is a bit of an artificial definition to use when using the entire market because it does include things that maybe people don't think it does.
Laura, does that include the towns? Like when you say across Kings County, is that just... Like when you say across Kings County, is that just outside of Kentville, Burke, and Willfield? Or is that inclusive of those municipalities?
We pulled that number from the Housing Needs Assessment that the province prepared. And my understanding is they prepared those for every municipality, so it would likely not include the towns. And it would have been based on census information. So that would also, we've got very large census subdivision areas that encapsulate a lot of land area. So that's actually another really important shortcoming, maybe, to point out is that when we think about these types of things, we think of big cities where census tracts are one street or one side of a street, not hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres. So when we talk about affordable housing in a more rural setting, we aren't really comparing apples to apples when we think about the broader discussion that's going on in the media and in the political world about the housing crisis or the affordability crisis. It is really very specific to our area. We can't always apply the same rules that we would in larger cities to this region. So affordable housing, housing sits on a continuum, like most things. On the left hand of our screen, on the left hand of our screen, we have homelessness. So people with no home, whether they're sleeping rough or whether they're couch surfing or they're bouncing from house to house. Homelessness is on the very left. The next step would be emergency shelter. So I've heard some rumblings around... Well, an emergency shelter, actually, would just be somewhere you might stay for a night. Next, we get transitional housing. And I've heard some of the councillors discussing a meeting that's set to take place tomorrow around the Pallett community in Kentville. That would be considered transitional housing. It's housing that comes at a reduced cost but also includes some supports in terms of social supports to ensure that people are living good lives while in transitional housing. Similarly, supportive housing would be sort of a more longer-term situation that also provides supports in that way. Community housing generally is government-built housing that generally the province has built in the past. Then we get affordable housing. And affordable housing can be either non-market housing, so housing provided by government, or market housing. It really is linked to the cost and depending on the definition you choose, of course. And then we get, on the very right, market housing, which is probably what most of us live in. You rent or buy housing on the open market at the rates dictated by the market. So we see along the bottom that the needs for non-market housing, so from homelessness to one-half of affordable housing, these are traditionally filled by government. They generally do not result in profitable operations. They do require financial supports. So they generally are not filled by the private sector. But where we do see needs being filled by the private sector is in the higher end of affordable housing and within market housing. And this is the area we're really targeting tonight, and we'll discuss that as well. So there's lots of different ways to achieve affordability, both market and non-market approaches. So the first that we've already begun to do, you may have noticed, is ease regulatory requirements to increase the housing supply using the market. So things like accessory dwellings or increased residential densities or heights. These are all things that we have pursued recently and continue to do so tonight. A second option is to provide funding to build. So the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation does provide subsidies to developers in exchange for agreements for housing being kept affordable for a given period of time. Government can build its own housing. So the province of Nova Scotia, Housing Nova Scotia, maintains rental stock and has recently made announcements that they will be exploring constructing new affordable housing. And lastly, there are ways for municipalities to establish initiatives that either require the inclusion of affordable housing or highly incentivize the development of affordable housing. So the two options we're going to look at tonight are the first and the last. So we're going to look at some additional regulatory requirements that we're looking to ease as well as setting up the ability for us to consider initiatives that either require or additionally incentivize the development of affordable housing. So we'll start with the last, our development initiatives. So we have two that we've been exploring. The first is bonus zoning and the second is inclusionary zoning. So bonus zoning really is a bonus. So a developer gets something. Typically, it's a higher building height or more units or greater density in exchange for some community benefit. It could be practically anything that council identifies. Other municipalities have used this type of money for public space improvement, so public art. Or some have used it in a pool for affordable housing or playgrounds or the like. Inclusionary zoning is a bit more of a heavy-handed government approach, I would say, wherein council would establish a target number, whether it's the number of units on a property or a given density. And beyond that, developers would be required to provide a portion of that housing at affordable rates. So the way we've approached this is sort of in a more incremental way. So we're proposing municipal planning strategy amendments to establish the policy direction towards bonus zoning and inclusionary zoning. But this is simply a policy direction. And we've also identified additional amendments to land use bylaw to facilitate greater residential development as of right in the R3 zone as well as the R4 zone and the commercial residential C3 zone. And these changes are primarily to the maximum number of units that can be built within a dwelling. So our first development initiative is bonus zoning, and this is set up in the MGA in section 191 subsection G that says incentive zoning means requirements that permit the relaxation of certain requirements if an applicant exceeds other requirements or undertakes other action in the public interest as specified in the requirements. So that's a lot of requirements. But within the content of the land use bylaw, we get a bit more clarity. Where a municipal planning strategy so provides, a land use bylaw may provide for incentive or bonus zoning. So the way this works is, for example, a height bonus. That could mean that a developer gets one or two or whatever number extra stories on their building in exchange for funds for affordable housing, public art. They may get credits toward passive house design or LEED certification or Rick Hansen certification in the case of accessibility. Or, as always, staff is happy to accept cash to put in a fund to identify those benefits later on. So the way we're approaching this, if we go back to our MGA, where a municipal planning strategy so provides, a land use bylaw may. We are going to set up or proposing to set up the municipal planning strategy part. We are not necessarily looking to establish this type of program within the land use bylaw or within another bylaw at this time. We did do some consultation with developers on these two initiatives, both bonus zoning and inclusionary zoning. And the development community indicated that currently, while they would appreciate greater relaxation of regulations, they're not in a position to necessarily take advantage. They would be more likely to stay under the threshold for these types of initiatives at this time. We can look at why that might be in a moment. So our recommended approach is to establish policy direction in the municipal planning strategy to enable council to implement this approach by bylaw at a later date. With inclusionary zoning, we see in section 220 of the MGA that where a municipal planning strategy so provides, a land use bylaw may require and regulate the provision of affordable housing within developments, including requiring that a specified percentage of affordable housing units be provided within a development. This one is a bit trickier than bonus zoning. Bonus zoning, you set up a bonus, and if they take advantage, they take advantage. This, if done improperly, can really be a disincentive to development. Either in a hypothetical situation, if a developer was looking to build a fifty-unit building or more, or, I mean, it could be any number. There's no magic in the number necessarily unless it's done badly. And after fifty units, if we said, okay, you need to provide five that are considered affordable for ten years, they may say, okay, well, I'll just build forty-nine units, no problem. If we set the target too low, they may go elsewhere. We may not get any development. So this one is really tricky, and it very much depends on market forces. So Hemsden Consulting did some economic analysis. This was specifically in New Brunswick, so not that different from here. Some of the predictors for the success of an inclusionary zoning program. So firstly, you need to have a consistent supply of new housing and growth. While we have seen an uptick in demand for housing and we have also seen an uptick in the development of housing, they've not been consistent. And they've not been in the longer term. We've really only seen a significant uptick in the last five years or so. So we don't have the strong housing market and housing development market that would support this type of program. So patterns of intensification. So permitting intensification can lead to an increase in land values. If you all recall from our presentation on accessory dwellings a few months ago, our as-built densities are incredibly low. And as a result, our land prices are still fairly low. I know that we hear in the media and out in the world anecdotally that our land prices are high, and they are higher than they were, but they are not high in the grand scheme of housing across this country. Again, land value and market strength. So when you apply an inclusionary zoning approach, it artificially lowers the value of land because it reduces the amount of profit you can make on that land. And again, our developers indicated that where the land values are low, they would rather just build below whatever threshold we set and maximize and optimize their profits that way as opposed to having additional red tape. That was their word, not mine. So Housing Need in the Middle Income Group Inclusionary Zoning Program is best suited to address the needs of households earning a moderate income relative to their community but who are still unable to afford market-level housing prices. And I think in terms of the grand scheme of categories, this is the one that we are the closest to meeting. We do hear from folks with very good jobs at the difficulties in finding housing. So I believe that one would be met, but I don't believe at a staff level and our consultants that were hired to do some of the background work on this also agreed that the municipality of the County of Kings is not in an economic or market position to truly take advantage of an inclusionary zoning program at this time. So again, our recommended policy approach for this one is to establish the policy direction in the municipal planning strategy to enable council to implement this approach by bylaw at a later date. And you may say, well, why are we doing this now? Municipal planning strategy amendments take a significantly longer time than land use bylaw amendments. As we see, we see those come before you almost every month, but we rarely see MPS amendments before you. So this takes a significant amount of time. There's also a significantly longer approval process as municipal planning strategy amendments need to be approved by, at the very least, the provincial director of planning. But in most cases, and this one would be no different because it triggers a statement of provincial interest, that the minister of municipal affairs would be the approval authority. And that can take up to ninety days in addition to the process we've already followed. I think I covered that off. So with regards to our proposed amendments, I did mention we were going to make some additional amendments to the R3 and R4 zones. These were in response primarily to feedback from developers who indicated that they would appreciate some reduced regulatory control over development and would appreciate and would take advantage of, more importantly, eased restrictions within the R3 and R4 zone. And we also extended that to a mixed commercial residential zone, which is a relatively new zone in our documents. So within the mixed-density residential zone, we are proposing amendments to the zone placement policies. And this would now read that lands located in this zone are intended to provide a transition between areas of low and high density or on properties that would benefit from flexible development options, including a diversity of building forms. So this zone permits all manner of residential built form from a one-unit dwelling all the way up to a multi-unit dwelling. Currently, the number of units in the multi-unit dwelling is capped at eight. And development within this zone occurs at the same density as within our R1 or R2 zone. We require two thousand square feet per residential unit. Within the residential multi-unit or R4 zone, we are looking to amend the zone placement policy to read that lands located in this zone are intended for the development of housing in higher-density building types in strategic locations such as near main transportation corridors and near employment and commercial areas. So this zone, again, includes all manner of housing built forms all the way up to a multi-unit dwelling, currently capped at sixteen units. But we are proposing to remove that limit. And this zone enables development at a slightly higher density. It only requires eighteen hundred square feet per unit, so two hundred square feet fewer than within the R1, R2, and R3 zones. So here we have another MPS amendment. We have a policy in our MPS amendment that pertains to new mini-home parks or high-density development. So this would be density development that is occurring at a density higher than what is permitted in the R4 zone. This, again, was identified as a housekeeping amendment, but we've moved it forward, given the subject matter. But new mini-home parks are not a use in our land use bylaw any longer. We consider them grouped dwellings, given that they are one- or two-unit dwellings on a single lot, more than two. So we are proposing to amend this section of the MPS to remove the reference to mini-home parks. And we've done a little bit of wordsmithing on the rest of the criteria as well. We're also looking to add a few new sections related to the bonus density and inclusionary zoning. There was a section included that provides council with some direction on how we might monitor the housing market moving forward. And that would be to periodically review the availability and affordability of housing, but also to support the maintenance and expansion of affordable housing by others, where we at the municipality may not be of a scale or necessarily have the capacity to be housing authorities. We can certainly cooperate with other stakeholders, community groups in the area, as well as other levels of government. We can identify barriers on our end to housing affordability and encourage the renewal, repair, and upgrade of existing non-market residential units. So Policy 3.1.18 would establish the ability for council to adopt a bylaw that would outline the conditions and criteria for the purpose of collecting community amenity contributions. So these would be the bonuses that developers would provide to the municipality in exchange for additional scale, height, or density in their development. 3.1.19 establishes the ability for council to require inclusionary zoning. But again, it establishes the ability to create a bylaw that would require that. That would be all of the amendments for the municipal planning strategy. But in order to implement some of them, we would also need to make some amendments to the land use bylaw. So we would need to amend the zone purpose of the residential mixed-density zone. And we would also be looking to adjust the maximum number of units within a multi-unit dwelling from eight to twelve, with no change in the required density. Within the R4 zone, we would simply be looking to remove the limit on the number of units within a multi-unit dwelling. That would mean that the lot area would be the limiting factor on the total number of units. Currently, we cap it at sixteen units, which means that a developer having a piece of land that could support thirty units is now required to build two buildings instead of one building, which can make it more difficult from a market perspective. Within the mixed-commercial residential or C3 zone, similarly, we are looking to remove the limit on the total number of dwellings or total number of units within a dwelling. But we're also looking to adjust some of the zone requirements. So currently, all multi-unit dwellings in the C3 zone are subject to the setback requirements of the R4 zone, which are higher than those in the R3 zone. So if you were in a C3 zone with a three-unit dwelling... So if you were in a C3 zone with a three-unit dwelling, you would need to provide the same setbacks as a 16-unit dwelling in an R4 zone as opposed to a three-unit dwelling in the R3 zone. So we're looking to clean that up. And we have one final small housekeeping amendment related to our accessory dwelling amendments. So we were looking to add the text in italics to the current land-use bylaw. So this would enable greater than one unit, one dwelling per lot. So we've added the residential one-unit zone. And then within this, we've, we've provided some clarifying text that would require a parking space and that, what does that say? And just adjusting the terminology. So in summary, that was a lot of information for you. It was a lot of information for me, too. Within the R3, we're looking to go from eight units to 12 units within a multi-unit dwelling. In R4 and R3, we would not have a limit. It would be dictated by the lot, lot area. We are removing references to mini-home park development and adding affordable housing policies and enabling the ability to adopt a bylaws pertaining to bonus zoning and inclusionary zoning. So this is our spectrum again. So we would be looking to increase supply within that band of the spectrum and primarily through the private development market. That concludes my presentation. I would pass it back to the chair for comments from the public.
Thanks, Laura. Are there any questions from council tonight of the presentation?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor Matert.
I wonder if we could go back in the slides to the recitation. It's only, I think, two or three slides back to the reference to 14.3.3. I read that that no more than one dwelling shall be permitted on the lot except in R1 zone. R2, R3, and C3. So my question is, do we have a zone in which there is only one dwelling permitted?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor, all of our-
Since, I'm sorry, since R1 no longer is limited to one dwelling.
Go ahead, Laura.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor, our rural zones only permit one dwelling per lot. So that would be the A1, A2, A3, A4.
Okay, so it's, it's only A zones that now would-
And our shore, and our shoreline zones and our resource zones.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Mayor?
It does. It kind of makes me think, though, that we might consider renaming these zones. R1 implies one unit to most people's minds, I think. But I, but I thank you for the answer. I appreciate it.
Yeah, good point, Mayor. Thank you. Questions from council? I have one, if council will permit. At one point, you mentioned 1,800 square feet a unit. Can we go back to that particular? Can you just explain? So that's R4, and that limit is being reduced from 2,000 square feet? Okay, I'll just let you re-explain it. I just don't think I understood it correctly when you said it. Oh, I'm getting your light, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, to you. We've, it's always been 1,800 square feet. It just, it is a slightly higher-density zone than the R1, R2, R3 zones.
And that is a minimum of 1,800?
Yes.
What's the rationale for that? To me, that still seems rather big for a one unit. Just, I'm just thinking about maximizing building footprints. Like maximizing the space inside of a building footprint.
There's two things at play, really. The minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. So you, you automatically need 4,000 square feet, and that would get you two units at 13, sorry, 3,600 square feet. Sorry, mental math is not my forte. I'm well, I'm on the record for that. So if anyone wants to correct me, please do so. So the larger your lot gets, the more units you can have. So just for the sake of my, my math abilities, if you had an 18,000-square-foot lot, you would get 10 units.
Thank you. Counsel Kellum.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a question as, through you to Laura. How do our regulations compare to our neighboring municipal units like Annapolis and Hans? How detailed are we compared to them?
Annapolis County, I believe, is in the end stages of finishing their very first comprehensive planning document set. So up until recently, they did have a lot of areas that were not subject to any zoning. My understanding is they don't also have a lot of sewer-serviced areas. They tend not to see the densities because onsite systems to support such large-scale developments are quite expensive, prohibitively so. At, at a certain point, you might as well build a private sewage treatment plant, really. In Hans, I'm not positive. I know that they, in West Hans, they are potentially exploring inclusionary zoning, but they do not have it in place at the moment. But I'm not overly familiar with what their higher-density zones within their urban areas permit. But I do know that they have been seeing some, some higher-density developments, a couple of eight-story buildings and, and maybe some, some other stuff, too. But I'm not overly familiar. I keep pretty busy here.
I guess I ask that. I, I've heard many times that we've lost development here and they've moved to another county, which was less regulations, of course, but-
Just a reminder, counsel, we're in a public hearing, so no debate works, but just asking questions at this point because it's a public hearing, right? So we're just trying to keep it really focused to questions of clarification. But you could, you're definitely free to have this conversation in that municipal council when we get there, later tonight. Is that okay? Just asking questions.
That's okay. I didn't want to cloud the, the atmosphere at all, but I just, things come into my mind and I have to say it or I may forget it.
I understand. I'll come back to you when we come back about comparable municipal units.
It's a lot of information, that's all.
It certainly, it was a lot of numbers tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We'll come back to you in council. Thanks. Comments from, I have no more questions from council. Does anyone from the public wish to ask any questions or have any, seek some clarification? Speak for or against? You can come on up to the microphone and just state your name and address or where you live for our record.
Hi, Sharon Allen, Ridge Road. A lot of you are familiar with me by now. I'm just looking for clarification. There's things I don't understand. And I just want reassurance that we're not expanding into the rural areas under Agra zoning, A1s, A2s, A3s, and even C4. That there's no implications for any of those zones.
I don't believe so, but I will look to Ms. Moser for-
Yep. Open you open that there's no implications for those zones.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker, this would only apply to zones that are currently within our growth centers. It does not affect any of our rural zones.
So just, it's only in the growth centers, which would be New Minus, Centerville. I don't want to, I couldn't, I couldn't even try to list them all, but yeah.
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
I hope that's been, I hope that makes you feel better. Good. Okay. Anything further from the public this evening? Now's your time. There's no more time to address council till the end of municipal council. So if, seeing nothing further, at this point, we will adjourn the public hearing and move into municipal council. Yanni, do you require any? Oh, you're good. We're good to go. All right. Turns out I'm the one that requires some help over here. Did you take that for me? Oh my gosh, I think it's right here. It is. Sorry, folks. I gotta use my paper copy. All right. Good evening, everyone. We've adjourned our public hearing. Welcome to municipal council. Today is Tuesday, February 6, 2024. At this point, I'll call the meeting to order and we will take roll call.
Present.
Thank you, Mayor Matert. My name is Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz. I am filling in for the mayor as he's, he's away for the time being and, but able to participate virtually, which we, we're really grateful for technology that he's able to join us. So, thank you, Mayor Matert. You'll note that we have nine members of council in attendance. Could I have a motion to excuse Counselor Burgess this evening? Moved by Counsel Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Kellum. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to excuse Counselor Burgess, please indicate in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. For those who may be new or listening online, we do have a 10-second delay from between when the motion is called for us to register our votes on the electronic pin pads, and then they're displayed on the screen. The motion carries unanimously to excuse Counselor Meisner. At this point, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated, moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. Any comments, questions, discussion points for the agenda tonight? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
And just a quick note, there will be a brief closed session at the end of the meeting this evening. So we will adjourn. I don't believe we'll need to come out of camera, so when we adjourn, we'll go in camera and then we will be closed for the evening. I don't think there's any motions. We have an approved agenda with nine in favor. At this point, I would ask if anyone has any conflict of interest issues to disclose, now is the time. Any conflict of interest issues on council? Seeing none, move to item four, approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is January 9, 2024. Could I have a motion to approve that set of minutes, moved by Counsel Granger, seconded by Counsel Armstrong? Counselor Armstrong, you have a comment.
11A on our minutes from January the 9th, that is not the motion that we approved or voted on. There was an amendment made to it.
Okay. I'll look to the clerk. Do we have the amendments? I'm sure we have the amendment on file if it was passing.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the-
Yeah.
Tape or whatever.
Sure. So we'll just have those updated. Good catch, counselor. So that was from the January 9th, regular, semi-regular, second Tuesday of the month. So with that amendment, anything further on that set of minutes? Okay. We have a motion to approve by Counsel Granger and Counsel Armstrong. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. January 11th, special council meeting. The minutes are in your package. Any comments or questions, additions or deletions on those? Seeing none, I'd look for a mover, moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel Harding. Thank you very much. All in favor or otherwise, please signify now.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. The January 11th minutes are approved unanimously. And item 4C, January 23, 2024, special council minutes. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions? Seeing none, I'd look for a mover to approve those minutes, moved by Counsel Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Davison. Thank you. I just had to stare long enough in your direction. Lasers. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. And many thanks to Counsel Armstrong, who filled in for me and Mayor Matert, I suppose, on the 23rd. So thank you for chairing that meeting. Those minutes are approved unanimously. Item 5, is there any business arising from any of those minutes that we've just approved? Outstanding items? Questions? Okay. That covers items 5A, B, and C. Next, we'll move to the Planning Advisory Committee Recommendations of December 12, 2023. They will look familiar as we've just covered them in our public hearing, but I'll move to Counsel Armstrong, who's the chair of our Planning Advisory Committee, to read the motions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The first one is that council gives second reading for the amendments to the text of the land-use bylaw to change the minimum lot area and the lot frontage requirements for semi-detached dwellings within the county residential A4 zone as described in Appendix A of the report dated December 12, 2023. I so move.
Is there a second for the motion? Counselor Davison? Discussion. Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you. I was wondering, and I held this until now, it's just because I didn't feel it was appropriate to ask during a public hearing, but since this was an expedited item that was part of the public or the, the plan to do some housekeeping anyway, was there any cost incurred by the applicant on seeing this text amendment?
I will look to Ms. Moser to speak to that.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counsel Hurdle. In accordance with our fees policy, we did collect the typical $900 application fee, but also in accordance with our fees policy and our general practice, should the applicant wish to have that fee refunded, given that it is for a text amendment, staff would recommend that council approve that refund as has been typical in the past.
Thank you. So will that motion, would, would you like us to make that tonight or shall, will that come before us at a different time? Is tonight the time or is it next meeting?
The fees policy specifies that the applicant needs to make a request, so it would come at a later time.
Okay. So we will look for that request to come to us in order to implement the policy. Thank you so much for that direction. Counsel Hurdle, anything further?
No, I just hope to see that request come in.
I, I thought the same thing when I thought. Thank you for raising that. Anything further on the land-use bylaw text amendment? Okay, seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Item B, Counsel Armstrong.
The council gives second reading regarding the development incentive policies contained in Appendix B of the report dated December 12, 2023. I so move.
Is there a second for the motion? Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel Allen. Apologies. Discussion on this particular item. Counsel Kellum, did you wish to re pose your question now that we have a motion on the floor and we're subject to debate and opinion?
Sure. I, I would, I would just ask that question of maybe we're making more regulations and I'm wondering if it's going to impact development in a positive or negative way for Kings County. As I mentioned before, I've been hearing from developers that have moved to other counties because it's less cumbersome with our policies, not saying our policies are bad, it's just cumbersome for the, for the developers to, to go through the process. So that was my question, I guess. How much are we losing, that's all, or gaining?
Or gaining, losing or gaining. Laura, did you wish to comment on the, the question-ish?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair, to Counsel Kellum. Like I indicated before, I'm not overly familiar with the regulations within our neighboring municipalities, but I would suggest that from a staff perspective, typically when we've had to indicate that we can't accommodate housing proposals, they tend to be proposed in our rural areas, which are the areas we, we don't want to see developed as heavily or as, as much as our growth centers for a few reasons. One is the municipality has invested significant amount of money into infrastructure within our growth centers- into infrastructure within our growth centers and our as-built densities could stand to be improved to increase the efficiency of those systems. The other aspect within our rural areas is agricultural preservation, which we did hear for many years while reviewing the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw that the general public, notwithstanding those that would like to have a house in the rural area, were not interested in increasing permissions for residential development within our rural areas. In fact, we did hear from many people that we did not go far enough, to be quite honest. So I would suggest that this, I don't believe that we would be losing any development in areas where we want to see it. We truly have made it significantly easier to build housing within our growth centers, both within our lower density and higher density zones. In our lower density zones, through the adoption of accessory dwellings and the extension of the permissions for grouped dwellings within the R2 zone, and now tonight with these additional amendments to the R3 and R4 zone as well as the C3 zone. So I would suggest that any disincentive through this would not generally be felt within the growth centers.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Counselor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? I do have one, if council will permit. And Mayor Matard, do you have any questions? Or comments from above?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. My question is on the inclusionary zoning piece. And you noted during the public hearing that we haven't seen the consistent levels of growth and applications and that we may not be sort of big enough in the same sense as like a Halifax or Toronto, where inclusionary zoning would have the intended purpose and might actually serve, you know, the opposite of turning away development. And I'm curious, like, do you think that it will ever be a tool that is positively used in Kings County? Can we ever? Because I feel, you know, I thought when you were saying that, you know, we've seen sort of all these housing proposals come forward. We've been working on all these applications and, you know, staff have been really overrun with all this development that's happening. And so I'm curious, like, do you think we'll ever get to a point where inclusionary zoning does make sense? Or are we just too small and too rural? And are there other things? I know this conversation does not end tonight and that we keep looking at different ways of creating affordable housing, but curious if you think we'll ever get to a point where that inclusionary zoning piece? And the reason I'm sort of fixated on it is because in the applications for the Housing Accelerator Fund to the government, the Minister of Housing made it abundantly clear that he really only wanted municipalities that were either considering or implementing inclusionary zoning. And so it sort of puts us at a disadvantage by not having it. However, by having it, if it's putting us at a disadvantage in terms of a developer's perspective, then that's also not the right way. So I'm just curious, like, is there a middle ground? Will we ever get there? Or is it not a tool that rural municipalities can use? Your mic, sorry, who's on?
Just one easy question, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Through you, to you. Let's unpack there. I think I'm gonna address the last part first with the Minister of Housing. I did not see him say that the Housing Accelerator Fund would only apply to municipalities that were looking to adopt inclusionary zoning. I believe what he said, and I could be mistaken, that he was not interested in extending Housing Accelerator Funds to municipalities that were not interested in abolishing exclusionary zoning, which is, you know, our traditional R1 zone, where you get one dwelling on the lot, no opportunity for intensification, and a real exclusion of additional housing opportunities. So through, we have done this incrementally. It's not been through one fell swoop of an amendment, but through multiple incremental amendments, and you're right, we're not done yet, that we have gotten closer to ending exclusionary zoning in Kings County. That being said, we have a very different culture than the Toronto, Vancouver's, Montreal's of the world, where there is an expectation that we are a rural municipality and you're not going to see apartments of 30 stories or even seven stories. So when you ask, are we ever gonna get there? I don't know. But if we ever do get there, we can implement it very quickly.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And you're right about the minister's comments and that I think that makes me feel better. Because in some ways, we do still have exclusionary zoning or exclusionary zoning in the rural areas, but we have still stated through the MPS those reasons why. So, okay. Thank you very much. I had another question, but I can't remember it. I'll have to ask you later. Anything further from council? We have, it's been moved and seconded. Are we for or against? This is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, all in favor or otherwise of the motion, please indicate in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. The motion carries unanimously, thank you. And Counselor Armstrong, I'll look to you for the next public hearing date.
The next public hearing date is to be determined because PAC did not sit in January, so we don't anticipate anything coming forward at this point for another public hearing, but we'll keep you informed.
Thank you. I'm sure you will. Okay. We look forward to it. Next up is item 7, Amendments to Bylaw 45, Street Lighting, second reading. So we have no presentation scheduled for this tonight because we've already received it from Mr. McKay. At this point, I'd look for a motion that we give second reading to Amendments to Bylaw 45, Street Lighting, as attached to February 6, 2024 council agenda. Moved by Counselor Hurdle, seconded by Counselor Granger. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing I'll say is that anyone listening who may be particularly interested in this item, read the policy. And there is a very handy form that is available to you if you wish to apply for streetlights. So it's in the package. Moved and seconded, no discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. Next is 7B, Kings Transit Authority Fiscal 2024-2025 Operating Capital Budget. We have Mike Livingston here. Mike, what's your title again? It's finance.
It's a bit of mouthful.
Manager of.
Manager of financial reporting.
Financial reporting. Thank you so much. Welcome to council. You have the floor.
Thank you. So some fairly brief presentations from me this evening. The first on Kings Transit's operating capital budget for 2425. So quickly, some key points. Committee of the whole received a budget presentation from Kings Transit Authority on January 23rd, so earlier this year. The total operating budget was for the core operations of Kings Transit, And the capital budget was $5,630,000. At this point, the financing plan built into the budget for that capital program is somewhat limited. There was some really high-level groupings that were made that didn't really clearly distinguish third-party grant contributions versus municipal shares or utilization of reserves or long-term debt. So we're hoping to see a bit of an adjustment there and that'll be reflected in a bit of an amended recommendation later in my slide set here. But with that being said, the current budget would result in the municipality, the county of Kings, share being $1,085,462, representing a 6.4% increase. And we are looking to approve the Kings Transit budget in keeping with obligations under the Intermunicipal Services Agreement, or IMSA, specifically Section 15 Sub B, which would say that the budget would be considered for approval within 30 days of the beginning of the fiscal period. So roughly the end of February. So that would lead to the recommendation with a slight recommended amendment that municipal council approve the Kings Transit Authority Fiscal 2024-25 operating capital budget as attached to the request for decision dated February 6, 2024, conditional on receipt of a revised and more detailed capital financing plan.
Thank you, Mike. Questions on the recommendation?
I have one, if I may.
Absolutely, Mayor, go ahead.
Mike, do you anticipate that the numbers will change as a result of that more detailed capital financing plan? It's just, it's just, it's not going to change the numbers. That's the assurance I'm looking for.
There's a possibility that there could be an increase, for example, in the cost of short-term debt, basically bridge financing, if that was required. It's not 100% clear whether that will be necessary or not, which is in part why we need it to be clarified.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you. I know it's not part of the partnership requirements or the contract requirements, but I wonder, have we ever considered ensuring there's a performance improvement indicator as part of any kind of increase in funding requests? So that year over year, if there's a funding request, there's a measurable improvement in ridership and uptake?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Hurdle. There's never been a performance metric built into this specific process. If there was separately, I'm not aware. For example, we don't extend the financial condition indicators, for example, that municipalities are subject to, to IMSA organizations, but perhaps that would be an area to begin, something along those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And for anyone curious, the financial condition indicators are a really useful tool that are used to measure the health of a municipality's finance. And it's kind of an interesting read when you look through those measurements. Couple eights came on, then they went off. No further questions? For the manager of financial reporting? Seeing none, all in, oh, we have a mover and seconder, I think? Yes? Not yet, okay. I would accept a mover for the motion that reads that municipal council approve the Kings Transit Authority Fiscal 2024-2025 operating capital budget as attached to the request for decision dated February 6, 2024, conditional on the receipt of a revised and more detailed capital financing plan. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Killam. Discussion or debate? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you. And item C, back to you, Mike, on Valley Waste's capital and operating budgets.
Terrific, thanks. This may seem a little bit like deja vu. Another brief presentation from me. Key points. January 23, 2024, presentation to Committee of the Whole from Valley Waste. Would have included a total operating budget of $11,966,500, representing a 3.1% increase over the prior year budget and a capital budget of $3,050,000. Included in that capital budget are a pair of carryover projects and then a bit of project work at the transfer stations to conduct some maintenance on the tip floor and surrounding area that Valley Waste is looking at completing before the end of the current fiscal. And if they're successful in doing that, then it will not form part of that 3.5, but it's 3.05, but it's currently in there. So perhaps a slight adjustment in that figure when it all shakes out. But with that, the municipality share for Fiscal 2425 would be $5,035,156, a 3.6% increase. And similar to Kings Transit, looking at approval in accordance with our obligations in the Intermunicipal Service Agreement, different section, 20 Sub 2. And then the recommendation here would be that municipal council approve the Valley Region Solid Waste Resource Management Authority Fiscal 2024-25 operating and capital budget as attached to the request for decision dated February 6, 2024.
Questions of the presenter? Counselor Harding.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just looking here, it's talking about capital reserve. Is, are they keeping that in reserve? Or is that going back to each partner? Or what's going on there?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Could you be more specific of what you're looking?
Well, I just see it's $2,388,000. Is that gonna be saved there? Or we're not gonna use that in the 3.6% increase? Or on this capital budget?
So the, through you once again, Deputy Mayor. The Valley Waste budget has a forecast to utilize, I think, the majority of their capital reserve on particular projects in the future related to the transfer stations. On the Kings Transit side of things, which your number sounds strangely familiar to, that would be hypothetically utilized in the electrification project, but it's not currently clearly reflected there. So wouldn't be distributed to municipal partners. Those reserves are retained in both of the IMSA organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Oh, sorry. There we go. Okay. The motion has been read into the record. I have no further questions. Do I have a mover of the motion tonight? Moved by Counselor Davison, seconded by Counselor Allen. Thank you both. Discussion on the motion, any debate? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor. The motion is carried unanimously, thank you, council. Moving on to item 8, recommendations from Committee of the Whole, January 23, 2024. So we have a motion that was recommended from this meeting that reads, "The municipal council asks the mayor and CIO to contact Minister Lorr to station a permanent water bomber and appropriate support team at CFP Greenwood to facilitate a first response to future wildfires that will threaten residents and properties throughout this region." A mover of the motion, Counselor Killam, seconded by Counselor Granger. Any discussion on this motion? If anyone's curious to hear previous discussion, you're welcome to view or listen to the Committee of the Whole meeting of January 23rd. Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, any debate? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Granger, how do you vote? In favor? In favor? Thanks. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And item 9, recommendations from Nominating Committee, January 23, 2024. Counselor Armstrong, I turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The first item that we have is that municipal council appoint David Crabbe as citizen member to the Audit and Finance Committee for a one-year term commencing February 1, 2024. I so move.
Do I have a second for the motion? Counselor Davison, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now.
Aye.
Counselor Allen, in favor, perfect. Motion carries with all in favor. Counselor Armstrong, back to you.
That municipal council appoint Ryan Hut as a citizen member to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for a three-year term commencing February 1, 2024. I so move.
Second for the motion? Second for the motion? Counsel Harding. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. There we go. Now signify in the usual fashion. Thanks, Yanni. Those two motions are carried. Moving to item 10, Boarding Committee reports. No written reports were received. I have an outstanding one for AVTC, as well as Landscape of Grand Prairie, so stay tuned for those at our next meeting. Counsel Granger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Usually Counselor Burgess takes care of the diversity committees' updates, but with her not here, I just wanted to thank everybody that attended the kickoff event, coming together for the African Heritage Month, and it was a great thing. The counselors that missed it, you missed a good one. And it goes all month, there's things on our site that will direct you to other celebrations in other places as well, so feel free to check those out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other verbal reports from any committees of council or external committees that you may be representing the municipality at? Okay. At this point, I would accept a motion to receive the Boarding Committee report as provided verbally on February 6, 2024, for information. Counsel Davison and Counsel Allen, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, we're on item 11, other business. That motion is received and passed unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? The only thing I would say, if I could, is one thing I noticed on the presentation we received earlier was that on the spectrum of housing, because it is a topic of conversation that everyone's hearing about in their communities, the portion within which we were able to make a difference on that chart was relatively small, and I just want to reassure folks that that is not the only thing that the municipality is doing in regards to housing, and that it is a constant conversation, I think, at this point, among staff and council as to how we can support folks in our community who are living rough. And I attended a meeting with, that M.L.A. Palmer put on, Counselors Harding and Hurdle were also there on Friday morning, and it was really well-attended, and there were some great discussions that happened. And, yeah, just that I think it's that the municipality can do lots to help, and that that's not the only. What we saw tonight is one way, a tangible way that the municipality can help, but there are lots of other ways, too, that we're doing. So, I just wanted to raise that, and not think we were just doing that little red box, that there's other things we're doing, and talking about doing. Any other business to come before the meeting? Any comments from the public? You wish to come to the podium tonight and share anything with council? You're very welcome to. Another time? Okay. Perfect. At this point, I would look for a motion to adjourn into closed session, and we'll maybe take a five-minute recess. So, moved by Counsel Armstrong, seconded by Counsel Granger, that we move into closed session in accordance with Section 22, Section 2H Municipal Government Act Public Security. Please, yeah, please vote now. There we go. And I don't believe we'll be coming back out. Take care, folks. Thank you for attending our meeting tonight, and we'll be back in five for our in-camera session. Thank you to everyone who joined us this evening, and as always, thank you to council for your attention to these important matters, and staff for all your hard work. Have a great evening.